All this meeting. By twenty second regular city of those or council meetings order, please join with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the mercy and justice for all.
All right, just a couple reminders before we get started. If you have not signed in at the podium, please do so. Please silence your cell phones. If you need to take a call, please step outside. If you need to have a side conversation also, please step outside so it's not the sharing thing for the rest of the meeting. All right, um, do we need to do roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do I just ask if people are here or do you need to have them say their name or what is your recommend- recommendation?
I feel like that version is not cheating, but. I don't follow.
Okay, I'll just say names and you guys can just stay here, will that work?
Yeah.
Okay, Darcy Hanson. Don Ganser.
Here.
Aaron Johnson.
Here.
Tyler Renard.
Here.
Mayor Finnegan.
Here. Here.
Please stand. All right. Consent agenda items. Do we have any water sewer termination requests? We do not. You said we'll get the meeting minutes from last minute on our next meeting agenda, correct? Could you please sign in at the podium? Thank you. Well, that's pretty short. Uh, might entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion instead of instead of agenda.
I'll second.
Right, it's been moved by Dawn, seconded by Darcy to accept the consent agenda and including zero water sewer termination requests. Any discussion? Right here, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Okay, next up is petitions and delegations. If you have something to say, please come up to the podium. Your time limit is five minutes. We do ask that you tell us who you are and either if you live in the city limits and or what organization you're representing.
I'm signing in.
Thank you, Jeanie. Great.
Uh. Thanks. My name is Jeanie Klein. I'm not also, I'm not a. I'm not a resident of Ellsworth. I'm here representing uh, Cal Town Days. I have four topics that I want to discuss. First one, the easiest, being water uh, at Cal Town Days. I met with Dustin. I've, we've been uh, trying to compensate of the water and the situation out there. We decided not to use water during Cal Town Days, neither the splash pad nor water at the bouncing houses. The bounce houses that we are going to use are going to be dry, so that that's not an issue during Cal Town Days. Second item on my list, it's not something I'm completely understanding, but in my meeting with Dustin, we discussed food trucks and not being entirely sure of the existing guidelines. Dustin asked that I bring food trucks up during this meeting. Currently, we have food for food trucks during Saturday night event and four food vendors on Friday nights. The four food vendors on Friday will be non-uh nonprofits, fire department, the uh FCC LA and um, the two uh, the library and the um, ISSA. Doing some kind of, now, the four food vendors on Saturday are flatlanders.
Jeanie, they're trucks, right? They're trucks on Saturday. Okay, food vendors on Friday.
Yes. They're uh, mama sees, flatlanders, this, this, they hang those and on the sauce. And I have collected uh, sales licenses for all four of those. Uh, that here, so from that perspective, we're, we've pledged their sales license. We are not currently following through whether or not they have paid sales taxes. From that perspective on, I don't know what else we're responsible for doing. Uh, and that's where my question is to you, Dustin. Do we need to do anything else from the city's perspective?
Patrick, can you, can you help me weigh in on this? This is kind of a gray area that we're still working through.
Yeah.
Food trucks at uh, at um, Cal Town. Does anything she needs to do?
Well, I understand that she's talked about the license. We have it, so this would be about our peddler and solicitor ordinance. It's what they should be, which basically requires, and most cities have this. Uh, just registration with the city so that we know who from out of town is in business here. Uh, and and that's, we also have a stat, we do have on the book something that says you can't, that uh, food trucks can't block pedestrian traffic, but I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I'm assuming that's not an issue. As I said a lot, we should make sure that's not an issue with this. We actually have that street code. Check the mark I'm making. So I mean, as far as I can tell. Thanks, uh, should just let me read one last thing I had, let's finish. There is a, in the ordinance, there is a mention of not using the fee. It's actually, it's a city sponsored event. This is kind of a gray area. I don't think it is exactly a city sponsored event. It's my understanding of it. So I think the number of people applying was the council felt to make an exception. But if you made an exception to this, you'd be setting the precedent. So I just.
Yeah, they're charging that thirty dollar fee for participation.
Sounds to me like everything's in work. If somebody else, if you added a food truck at the last minute, you would want them to, the city office can get registered properly, but it won't be able to say.
A lot of people ask me, the sales tax, is that self tax go here at Ellsworth or does it go back to the city from where they're from?
The state, okay, so, the the state of Kansas says where you make the sale, the vendor has to report that to Topeka where they made sales and then send the sales tax to Topeka and they redistribute it to where it's supposed to go.
Oh, that's.
So it should.
Okay.
I say it that way because it's on the vendor to fill out that paperwork properly. Tells Topeka where they sold through that and then redistributed. If the vendor, those that have the problem, we. But, but yes, the sale, the sales in Kansas Ellsworth, we should get that sales.
So we have that vendor at our city offices, so that paper. So when the vendor comes in, we can hand to them and tell them, this is what they need to do.
But we don't collect the sales tax.
No, but they need to fill this paper out and maybe give us a copy and send one to the state or whatever.
Are we all getting our some?
Yes.
I took a lot of the time to practice.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to say, there's been a lot of discussion in town about food trucks. And I personally do not have any problem at all when we have a city function for our Cal Town, Fourth of July, any nonprofit organization. We close the street and they invite food vendors in, but I don't like the idea of the city just letting a food vendor come in and set up on city property. I think that's a conflict of interest to the other businesses in the community. And I don't know if that's in our ordinance or not, but that's maybe something we need to look at because uh, I don't think, I don't think that's fair to the other businesses that support Little League Baseball. Yeah, hockey league, soccer league, they all are asked for donations and then another out of town food service comes in and sets up on city property. Now, if it was on private property, we have no say about that. But for instance, I've seen one setting up on the line. I just don't think that's right. That's my opinion. You can kick me in the chin or whatever you want, but it's just not fair that the other food places in town, the city to sponsor somebody on their property. That's all I'm gonna say.
No, I mean, I just, just working with other cities and things, I think food trucks have, you know, become more of a thing than they were certainly twenty years ago. We haven't made, we have the, the ordinance law, I just have to make sure they register because we want to know who's doing business in town. Uh, I can look with law enforcement about, look about, we need to change something about, I mean, our parking codes or, there's nothing in our ordinance that says you can't enter the city. They can't park on city property, but we just look at that or clarify something, Dustin.
Yeah, I think we need to because everywhere I go, someone's been in my ear about it. So, they have a point. Very good.
So we're in compliance. You guys are great.
Yeah, so you've already registered with the city clerk's office each vendor, or the vendors have?
No, because we were given a um, pass on that in our meeting in March, that we didn't have to register each vendor. Uh, and Mariana and I reviewed that earlier, later last week.
Yeah. Okay, so you're gonna register that or?
I was told we didn't have to.
Well, but there's been some kind of convolution on.
We could easily register. That's not an issue whatsoever.
Yeah, uh, now that my guidance is clear, because I was a little murky to be honest with you, so uh, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, thank you.
Do we already make a motion or anything saying that we want her to register each vendor, just so it's clear? Or like, was it in the minutes in March saying that we told, we told her not to?
No, 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 this wasn't a meeting at a council meeting. This is just, I was trying to figure it out internally, because the peddlers doesn't directly apply to food trucks, so there's some confusion whether she had to or whether she.
If that's what we told her, we should do our work, okay?
So, okay, so this clears, you do it?
According to what?
My, sorry, the peddler's ordinance is applies to all businesses. It doesn't specify food trucks. My opinion is that with, with the ways to find a food truck falls under that ordinance and that applies. They should all register. So, especially because one of the most, the main kind of business we get in twenty twenty four from out of town is a food truck. So I think that's really what, I think it's, I think the intent of that ordinance is to get, just to get the food truck to let us know we sit down on what they.
So then the answer is yes. This is my interpretation.
To register him.
Well, then yourself.
I apologize for the stage you got to make.
Yeah.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I think I got it. Uh, the third item is alcohol license. Uh, despite the fact that we uh, did get approval for the use of the park last March, or earlier this year in March. I have since learned that the approval to use the park was not an all-inclusive authority. Um, I didn't, didn't know what to ask, so I failed to get approval to, to sell alcohol in the park. Uh, currently, we are requesting the opportunity, the option to sell beer and liquor. Beer would be to be sold for general admission for three dollars for those that are over twenty-one. Um, over twenty-one folks upon providing uh, ID, we issued a red bandit. The people in the VIP would be given the option of purchasing beer and for uh, liquor, they would be given a skull bandit in addition to the red bandit. The VIP section is a little bit more exclusive to be allowed to buy liquor. We don't want a bunch of folks running around with liquor and beer. Um, beer is sold at three dollars a piece. The VIP is sort of giving two liquor or beer tickets with their purchase of a menu, um, meal. After that, liquor tickets are sold at ten dollars apiece. We don't mind them drinking. We just want to make sure that they're drinking in in responsibility. So that's my request. It is for us to be given a temporary forty-eight hour liquor license or alcohol license to sell liquor and beer for the course of the two days.
Just so you all know, she does have a temporary license already approved by ABC.
I was saying, you can't go to liquor license, so.
Yeah. So a little clarification. So when she came in last week, um, she has liquor license already approved, the temporary permit. What she's asking permission for is to use the park or drink in a public space. So what we need your approval for, or what we're requesting approval on her behalf is to, for her to be able to sell to utilize her liquor license or permit on public property.
For the entire park, like all the way, you know, just to personal park? Yes. Do you, do you have it like roped up where you can only have alcohol in these areas?
Uh, that liquor would be just for the bridge to the land shell. And beer would be from second, second to third and the rest of the way. So just in the park itself. So that makes sense.
Yeah, so what if you see someone walking down the street with their beer? It's, how, how are you going to enforce that?
Uh, Kansas is a, a state where you can walk and carry a beverage and so. Yeah, so you can walk down the sidewalk with a beer in your hands. That is very limited on its enforcement. Uh, we do have EMS and the fire department on site, but it's, they're non-intoxicated. You can't do much of alcohol.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve them to sell adult beverages.
And to, to be clear, I'm sorry.
Beer and liquor.
Okay, so we only open Friday evening at five P M. And it would be, it closed at Saturday night eleven thirty.
Okay, Friday at five till eleven thirty Saturday night. Since she already has her ABC license.
Jeanie, do you, you have liability insurance for this event, right?
Uh, that goes into effect five days before the event. It does through Lucas Florida.
Thanks, Lucas.
Yeah. And to be clear, we have liquor, general and reenactment issues.
Guns are excluded. Guns are excluded from coverage of the reenactment.
Yes, reenact.
Okay.
It was the reenactment injuries that kept us hot.
Yeah, yeah, so no guns, no weapons, no anything happens with guns.
Yeah, guns and horses.
So you're not gonna have a shooting or anything like that down your park?
Yes, we will have to shoot.
You have, it's just not covered with the guns, but okay.
I, right now, they, they don't have any blanks coming out, but if there is like a projectile or anything like that, we are excluding.
Okay, I understand.
Please, I have a, my friend, do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion?
The only thing I was gonna say is, I would double check your application with the state of Kansas, because I think at a special event, you almost have that area fenced off.
No, you don't.
I'm just saying I would double check. I did it for ten years and I have to, so.
Okay, any other discussion?
So it's contingent on fifty.
I, I think I would just double check, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, it's been moved by Dawn, seconded by Darcy to allow the Cal, Ellsworth Cal Town Committee to sell alcohol at Presley Park from Friday, Friday, August second at five P M to Saturday, August third at eleven P M. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, pass.
Okay, and fourth is the most challenging of all, is financial support. Uh, they're requesting a donation grant sponsorship. Not sure exactly what the terminology is. Uh, Cal Town Committee did not submit a request for the, for support in the past simply because we weren't sure of this. The, we did not request support in the past simply because we weren't sure, we're not, we weren't sure of the future of this event. Uh, once we started working on it, we were excited to learn that the community and the businesses have come together unanimously as important to the event. However, despite best efforts, we're still coming out short in sponsorship dollars. We've been shaking every tree that I can think of. And despite the fact that we know that your twenty twenty-four budget has been exhausted and it's for a very long term loan, I'm still here asking for your help. We know that all your money's been given, so. Um, but what's, the least that can happen is you can tell me no. If we can even bring a couple thousand dollars out of asking for help and if not, it's not because I didn't ask.
Jeanie, did you apply for bed tax money?
Yes, yes. And we lost the best for twenty twenty-five dollars for me.
Do we still, Dustin, do we still have the fireworks fund reserve that we used to have years ago?
I think it was called Festivities.
Pardon?
I think it was called Festivities.
Festivities or fireworks. Do you still have that fund?
The one that I have is uh, community grants and the only ones we issue students to, to uh, bank for what else with the county.
We still have that. Festivity.
And, and Ellsworth Area Arts Council.
You have a little bit of time to work with Tammy. She had mentioned that Festivities.
I think we need to leave that up to Dustin to see what he could find in the city fund, which is labeled what he can use for this. And then we still have time. We can come back to this in two weeks. And like, see what he can find out.
I guess.
He can commit something right now. Legality of it is, we can't. But if he can, if he can investigate for us and come up with a plan, then we can hear his point.
That's not all of that, but with the fact that you guys are selling alcohol and stuff, and this is the first year you guys are doing it this way, but you have no idea how much money you're gonna make, so maybe you guys can make it up on, on that end as well, possibly. I mean, you'll, you'll know more after this, so.
Okay.
Can you say how much you're short, maybe? How much estimated are you short?
It's a moving number. Um, we've still got about twelve, twelve thousand dollars out there that we're waiting commitments. Um, you know, the, the, the uh, bed tax, we're looking at still moving number, what are they called? Uh, tourism tax now?
Bed tax.
Bed tax, it's kind of a moving number, estimate. Um, but advisor still made several commitments, we're waiting on that. So uh, kind of expecting.
And that committee needs this week.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and same with advisor. Uh, so between those two numbers versus what our budget is, we're missing about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, we're expecting both uh, beer sales, liquor sales, probably in the range of five to eight thousand dollars. So we're short maybe five to eight thousand dollars. And being a first year event, we actually have no idea what revenues that will get made. That's what's hard. We have no idea. It's not the personal, just say no, it wasn't because I didn't ask. You don't, you don't, you don't, you didn't know enough.
Thanks for your consideration.
Thanks, Jeanie.
I am, I am.
Yes, sir.
True.
Jean, Mike. Yep. Selling to the road in the street.
All right. Anybody else for petitions and delegations? Mary?
I do.
Can you please step up to the podium and introduce yourself?
I automatically said my name.
I'm definitely seeing everybody else in here or online knows who you are.
I'm pretty much everybody is. Anyways.
Would you please, Mary?
Thank you. And I have four things right now. We need another retention time. I showed Dustin a picture earlier. My jeep is sitting in water. At the ramp and walking, cutting up the A E A. I'm here, but it was not safe because water was pouring down both ramps. And where the A E A parking cans is full. And I actually couldn't go around the front of my jeep because there was already water that was too far out. I couldn't safely get to the sidewalk. I don't know what I'm gonna do, but I read if there's water, should there, so. Um, joking about a retention time, but I'm saying that this is an issue that we need to look at and see a third way to reroute this water to make it safer for everybody. Because using the ramp, I may have chances of that, because my balance is not the best. So. I did show Dustin how hard it was, right here. So that's something that I think that you guys know of that and see what you can do about it, because it's a definite answer.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Second one, um, Dawn answered this for me before. Um, actually, you answered it for me um, in that message, but I'm gonna bring it up so that it can be put into the paper. And that's about the golf carts and parking them along the curving like a vehicle. Could you please say, uh?
Sure.
What you said.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that golf carts are permitted to be used in the city of Ellsworth. Number one, you have to have proof of insurance. Number two, you have to come down to the city and show them that's legally your golf cart and you have to go to the police station then and get a permit. And then you have to have a flag on the back of your golf cart. I think it's like four feet right above the top where people can see it. And then you're legal to use that golf cart in the city of Ellsworth. Did I forget anything?
The reflective signs.
All reflecting, slow-moving vehicle sign on the back.
Yeah.
Don't have to be tagged. But you have to have proof of ownership and insurance, the slow-moving vehicle and then the
And a permit.
And a permit and, and the banner flying over there. You'll, you see them on bicycles and stuff.
Yes.
Fire axe pole.
So if we went back in the paper and then if somebody doesn't play by the rules, then that can be dealt with.
But that's not for the police department then, if they're not. I mean, the police department has to be responsible for that.
Maybe if someone was doing that and it was noted and they were doing it for extended period, then a person couldn't run to the police. Okay, that case appear at that one. I have something to say about Jessica, you know, Dawn.
Okay, bring it on, Mary.
You guys have really stepped up and been helping out with the city with everything that needs to be done. There's been a lot to do and there's, I know Dustin had a lot on his plate. And I just wanna say thank you for helping because it does take, like a village to raise a child, well, it takes everybody to get some things accomplished. And so I'm just saying thank you. Also, Dan, you might not be happy about this. But it doesn't matter. Dan is not going to be able to help, but he didn't have to. Because of blood pressure issues and things, so it was adversely affecting him with all the help that he was getting, so he's not, he will not be doing that in the future, so it's gonna be you guys that you have to work together on the things that need to get cut up on and whatever, okay? But I want to thank you two for what you've done. And then, let's see, talked about the floating. Oh. Dan, this one is for you. I think you'll approve this one. Um, and you know, or may not know, he is somewhere in Missouri. I don't know where. And so he is here by his own. That was not his original intention. His original intention was to be here, but there were travel difficulties both yesterday and again today. There were issues. So he's here by his own. And I would like to say that even though he's not here as a person, he does does his job for the city. Whether it's a phone call or text message or email, he's still doing, or he does, he's still doing that while being out of town, out of state. Also, um, I wasn't keeping track, but I've already reminded earlier that it had been four years since they had a vacation. But in the last year, in the span of one year, they were gone three different times because of parents being ill and passing away. And to be with them. So I just wanna say that he's been doing everything he can. He's still working with Cal Town. Even though he's in Missouri, he's, he's working with everybody. And I just want that to be that he's still doing everything that he can do.
Anything else, Marry?
I think that was okay, Dan. I hope you, that's all I have. I just had to thank you and um, you should just walk out there. I don't know.
Thank you.
I don't know what to do.
Thank you. Karen, anything for petitions and delegations?
If there's any, yes, I know I'm not gonna say it yet.
What? Can you make, Lucas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, good news. Uh, come to present the council with their dividend check from E M C. Oh, Lucas, oh, shoot, Lucas' part, government insurance, and you're not living here on this slide. Um, here to present the dividend check from E M C Insurance from the twenty-three to twenty-four policy period, uh, the amount is fourteen thousand. Uh, the amount is fourteen thousand eighty-one dollars forty-six cents. So I don't, who would like this?
Yeah, there you go, yeah, that's been all my points.
You can't make though.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? So, alright, unfinished business, zoning amendment request for parcel West Eighth Street and Prospect. It's the Homoka subdivision to acres all of block sixteen.
Jessica, so as requested Dylan, if you wanna come up and help you with anything, so. As requested Dylan has executed with me. Their request to, as you ordered us to do or requested us to do, which is a change across the. Lot at Eighth and Prospect to R one. As per the procedure, we sent it to, we uh thanks to Dylan's help. He actually presented their request, his request to the planning commission. And um we pretty much walked them through. All the steps and all the questions that were required to answer by ordinance to consider that. And um all I did was draft their request into a report. Um, we did have a public hearing and better with that, we had how many, four people show five?
Four.
Four, and all four people were unanimous and that they uh aim like the park area. Not any of them commented on the R one or R two housing, it's pretty much all the four people that showed up or. Uh wanted uh to make it a park. And so there was some discussion about maybe adding an additional instead of making it R one. There was some additional discussion that space that the people showed up at the public hearing. Um seem to be on board with uh uh adding the parking type or a park type of uh.
They wanna do zoning class.
Yeah, thank you.
Where parks, what they're asking.
But uh they the planning commission, uh while they discussed the part of the. Their recommendation is to keep it R two and they base it off not only the. Not only the plus, not all the questions, but also based on the housing assessment. Uh requiring R two housing as a priority. Jessica and I did prior to the meeting did have a discussion about having one having one of their that represent the future. I didn't quite, this is my first time executing this in this format, so I I can have them, I can request that next time. Or if you want to table this and have them come to you, that's an option. But I uh, this is a recommendation and it's uh, you have any questions for us?
Do you need feedback? We need the neighbors up in that area?
Yeah, the, yeah, that's what they will, they all want.
That's the four people that were there, okay.
Yeah, they were all.
So that's the recommendation of the committee?
The committee wants to keep it R two, so in in R two you can have R one housing, R two housing, you have parks, we cover everything in R two.
Okay, R two you cover, okay, I understand.
So do you know what their definition of a park is? Is that like a park with playground equipment? Is that like a golf park? Is that a walking path? Is that?
I think they were looking for more for children, I guess it was specific estate then.
So do we have a zoning thing for just parks? Let's get one made and zone it a park then, right? That's what people want.
Make it a park, I mean, do we have the funds to, Tom said that, to make it a park, be realistic here.
I think I think Chris Park and Christopher Parker dedicated parks, which means if you look at the plat, it says it can only get parked for whatever. Uh, R two allows apartments, I didn't, you know, it's a little bit more fluid, I guess, it could be a purpose of a different. Um, the only other thing I was gonna say was a recommendation from a planning committee can be overruled by the super majority of this morning. You vote on it tonight, you'd have to get four votes to override that, I'm not telling you to do that, I'm just telling you how that will work if you voted on it. Uh, this is somewhat my fault because there was a discussion earlier when you guys were, there was some apprehension about doing duplexes or triplexes in that area. Which R two would allow, I suggested if you resound it to R one, then the people would never would ever be duplexes or triplexes. But um, that's so that's somewhat responsible for this coming forward, yes, if you have any other questions? The other option, we don't really have, so we, I think you could dedicate it to a park uh permanently. Uh, we would probably just drop different ordinance for that and they would probably wanna go through the process of getting notice to everybody. I don't think our code requires that, but I think that would probably be the right thing to um.
Well, that's what I thought, we talked, we wanted at least R one or park. Because they, you know, that's a house, building a house. I think people could go with that more than a huge, like an apartment complex. But if they're all want, I mean, I'm I'm good with a park too.
If we still own the lot and we never sell it, we could put the kibosh on duplexes, right? If Dylan said, hey, I'm a builder and I wanna make duplexes, we could say, uh Tyler doesn't want that.
The the city's owned that lot for a long time, I know the history is, at one point I think we, yeah. I think it got resound to R two way back in my brain in Jonathan Mitchell's era, I think he had a, he was pursuing grants to build duplexes and it was. Being considered for that, that's probably what they resounded to R two. Um, but the cities, as long as the city owns it, the city decides what to do with it. They give R one, I think the idea of R one zoning would be to say, okay, if somebody wants to build here, the city would entertain building houses here, here's R one.
And R one can't be a park for houses?
It can be duplex, R one is only residential, single member residential.
Okay, but it could potentially be a park.
I think. I would have thought so before tonight, I haven't looked at our code. I think we can continue to use it as a side of the bill.
It has an acceptable use for apartment, both R one and R two.
What do we do? Well, we don't have, we didn't like the plans that we had for housing before. Nobody in the world right now is wanting for a park anyways, so why are we spending a lot of time with this?
I think. It was just so, we didn't keep getting these guys bringing in these.
So if we change what's, if it changes to R one, if we vote to change it to R one, it's pretty much residential or we can decide to put a park there later on.
That's correct.
Can I make a motion that we take this property on the eighth prospect known as Homoka Division? And have it sound R one? I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Dawn, seconded by Tyler to take the. Six, the Homoka subdivision, acres to all block six from an R two to an R one rating. Actually, or sixteen, just, excuse me, block sixteen, I don't know what that's called, say something or other. Block sixteen, okay, what kind of description you got, anything?
I I just think like, what if they were duplexes like upon like Elwood, like that style? Is, I don't think that's in your head the same, that's my only thinking.
Well, I mean, the reason we even went through this was for the the developers that were doing like apartment complexes.
Yeah, every kind of stuff like.
And everybody around there would be, was more happy with a house than something like that, I mean, that's why we got to where we are now.
But if we don't sell that parcel to a builder, we could say, no, we don't want your your multi-level apartments, we want. It'll work duplexes or something.
Yeah, I I just didn't wanna vote on it and then like completely exclude like that level of.
Yeah.
Style of house, if you don't wanna make.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I guess for me, I wanna make sure that with R one, we could still have houses and a park, will we possibly that we can, okay?
You know, just keep in mind, R one, if we do it that way, we do have to invest a little money to re. Re uh replanted.
What is a little money?
Let me give the same amount as that check we just got.
Right, because if that's a little money, then I don't really think it's worth.
Yeah. I honestly don't know the pricing.
Okay, well, Karen is saying, hold on, Dorothy's asking about that, and we think.
I mean, I guess somebody knows how expensive it is. I mean, it's not going anywhere as it is.
Okay, I'd like to retract my motion.
Dawn has retracted his motion, what do you want me to say?
You would move it to table.
Okay, so Dawn moves or I can move since I'm leading the meeting?
Yeah, you you can make a motion also.
Okay, well then I, unless Dawn, do you want to make a motion? Okay, I will make a motion to, I move to table. The zoning amendment request for parcel West Eighth Street and Prospect, block eighteen and subdivision. Until we have more info.
I'll say.
Okay, I moved and Erin seconded to table this, uh any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay, motion passed. Okay, moving on to new business, recommendation for special question election on citywide sales camps. Can we please get this man like a pack of pens for the meeting? Sorry, we're done joking.
Uh Kevin Cowan with Hill One Bell, you know, from Wichita, City Farm Council. Uh glad to be here, but I made it this time, last time I had car trouble when I was sitting this way, so. The resolution before you tonight, uh pretty straightforward, it calls for special sales tax election. To continue essentially an existing sales tax that you have. This ballot proposition, while not identical uh to the ballot proposition that was approved. Uh ten years ago, nearly ten years ago, is uh nearly identical and would call for the sales tax one quarter percent. Uh to be used for public infrastructure projects in the city, so pretty broad. Broad purpose for it, uh if the city issues bonds for in the public infrastructure projects. The sales tax could be used as a debt service source for that, so that's referenced in the ballot subdivision as well. So, timing for this is perfect, I saw the agenda report, uh you are operating in something of a deadline. By September first to get this to the county election officer for the general election. The sales tax that exists now will terminate next July one or at the end of June thirty. So in terms of when you can have an election and not have to be a special election to continue this tax. November is the time to do it. The process, uh if this is approved in November, is you have to give the Department of Revenue notice. Uh that the sales tax will continue and you'll implement by order, so you pass an ordinance. That is sent to the Department of Revenue and then they know that next July one, the sales tax continues. They require at least ninety days or one calendar quarter notice of any of these sorts of changes, so. Uh again, November is a general election, the next uh beginning of the calendar quarter is January one. November is within ninety days of that, so you, you're one calendar quarter early uh is what. If you work it through, if you, if this failed and you wanted to have a a sales tax election, change the proposition slightly. You'd have one crack at that in the early part of next year when you can have a special election. And still get notice to the Department of Revenue by April first, that first day of the calendar quarter. Um to continue on July one, so um. It's fairly straightforward, but there are some important deadlines that we have to be thinking about, that Dustin was thinking about. Uh in terms of getting this in front of you tonight, I know uh the county will appreciate. Having information about this early, they probably didn't process it much with the primary election uh coming out. But after they get to the primary, they get pretty serious about getting things ready for the general, so if we can get this to them in August, if this is. Adopted to know that shouldn't work well for them, so I'll stop there, if there are any questions, if I have.
First of all, thanks for making the trek.
Yeah, thank you.
I brought a thunderstorm.
If we approve to put this on the election ballot, we are not increasing the sales tax in alter, we're just maintaining what we have.
Yes, I mean, I call it a continuation, the Department of Revenue will tell you it's not a continuation, it's a new sales tax. But it's basically, you had a sales tax of a quarter percent for ten years, that will end. Uh and you will have a new sales tax that starts the next day, a quarter percent, and so. The the way it would feel uh to your citizens is just a continuation of what they're.
And the budget would stay the same on that.
Yes.
Well, the other side of that is if we don't get it approved, then they have to take it out of our budget, yeah, we're just short.
That would be, and then we have to make it up with the mill levy then.
Uh that's one option.
Yeah.
Okay, I moved that the city adopt resolution twenty twenty-four sixteen. Authorizing and providing the calling of a special election on November fifth, twenty twenty-four with the purpose of imposing and tuning in one quarter. Citywide sales tax, public infrastructure projects, including the payment accruals, interest, bonds, finances, projects. Providing and giving notice of setting up.
I'll second that.
Alright, it's been moved by Dawn and seconded by Tyler to. Adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, which is the resolution authorizing and providing for the calling of a special question election on November fifth. For the purpose of imposing and continuing a one quarter percent citywide sales tax. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay, motion passed. Uh sorry, oh, do I need to do roll call? Okay, sorry, we'll do a roll call, so um I'll say your name and then you just say yay or nay. Darcy?
Yay.
Dawn?
Yay.
Erin?
Yay.
Tyler?
Yay.
Myself, it's a yay, that good? Okay, thank you, Governor.
Thank you.
Feel free to take a little rain on yourself. Alright, next is the cemetery survey. Is that you, Dustin?
Um, I'm I'm allowed, I asked Dylan to come tonight and help me with this, so Henry, so long as you can be back. We've been getting asked, don't hear them talk about it, he's been helping me with the cemetery project, we did force product. On the city clerk's office and Louis, why Dylan's been helping us with.
Go ahead.
Alright, we started working on this uh survey back in October last year. And I figured while we were doing it, I would add twenty-four new blocks to the cemetery because we're gonna run out of space, I figured. Just will do it now. But the proposals come back and the cheapest was fifty-four thousand. And the highest is a hundred and seven thousand eight hundred dollars. And of course, that's then, that's gonna go up now because we waited, but uh. We don't have to do it legally, I mean, the cities are, don't have to have a plat over to county. So, I mean. My personal opinion with our budget, it is, I think.
Can you just tell everybody what would be the advantage of doing it?
The the only thing it does is it lets them register their, their plats over at the. County, it's registered deeds.
But we've not done that in the past, right?
And there is one downside too, if it's registered over there. And somebody sells it and doesn't tell us about it, we could possibly bury somebody in the wrong. Black, we need to know the salt. But here we got control.
Okay, I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit, so we can either start plotting, spend a boatload of money. Or we can do what we've always done and have a little control and spend no more money.
Yeah, I mean, it's already, I don't, I guess we would call it plat, we already registered. Plot there.
Who keeps track of all of that?
City clerk's office.
Okay.
I recommend them, Jessica, I've heard they make a good job of helping me digitize the records in between their efforts. And Dylan and Troy's efforts, they've gone out to verify every single location, every single plat and. So we've been working on this really well, we make sure it's straight.
Is it like cemetery does not have a deadline in our budget anymore, right? It's just all part of like. Is it like cemetery does not have a deadline in our budget anymore, right? It's just all part of like.
Well, didn't look into it. We ain't got the money for that.
Good. Is that a consensus?
Thanks, though, thanks, Patrick. He just made your wages.
Okay, well, let's move along, and Dan, are you in a place where you can pull over and talk? He is on, I think he might be on his wife's phone.
Yes. Yeah, I'm here. Okay, um. Can you hear me okay? Alright, I would like to appoint, okay, I would like to appoint Jerry Penny. For the appointment as the City of Ellsworth Chief of Police. Do we have a motion?
We're gonna pause for just one second so that we know that that is actually who's standing in front of us right now. Okay, so this is Jerry Penny, our new chief of police, your first day was today, so. Dan is asking, is recommending that we work them, so. Do I say, you are gonna say? I'll say Dan.
Mr. Mayor, I would make your recommendation that we appoint Jerry Penny as the new chief of police.
I'll second.
Alright, I would like to appoint Jerry Penny. As the City of Ellsworth Chief of Police. Do we have a motion?
Percy made the motion and Dawn.
I'm, I hear him, okay.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay.
Alright, motion passes, congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you.
Well, you can just stay up here because next is department heads, so between you and Wykel, maybe you can just say. Oh, pardon me. We have to swear a man.
Oh.
I, Wykel has the sermon or Mariana?
Very obvious.
Both, both.
Take it away.
Apparently we have multiple votes, so since I'm up here, we're gonna start with the honor portion with the honor. If you have a minute, try and, on my honor. I'll never betray my badge.
I'll never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character for the public trust.
My character for the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
Always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the constitution, always uphold the constitution of the United States, the state of Kansas. The United States, the state of Kansas, my community, our community, and the agency I serve.
Oh, swearing in the police team.
Patrick, I think you were in every voter taking just.
But, you're gonna repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
Support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Kansas.
Constitution of the state of Kansas.
Basically discharge the duties of the chief of police.
Basically discharge the duties of the chief of police.
So help me God.
Yeah, congratulations, Jerry, we're we're very happy to have you. And we're looking forward to starting a new chapter, so thank you once again for accepting the position. And just, uh, we're a grateful city to to have you, so we look forward to the journey.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, we have consensus on that, right? Alright, so next up is department heads. Wykel, there you are, you wanna say anything, you wanna give a speech?
We have a new police chief.
And Dave Buckholz, are you still back, or I guess, Jerry, do you have anything you wanna say?
No, just an empty letter for this.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, Dave Buckholz, thank you. Delvin? Patrick?
I don't have an official report, I went to thank Sergeant Wykel and the rest of the police officers for. Easy to work with the last few months and, uh, we're gonna go for many chances.
Great, uh, Deputy City Court. Dustin?
Got a couple of items, uh, follow up items, um, taking a lead, uh. Trying not to leave loose since multi use path pulls out guardrails. Right now, we are currently focused on getting us to downtown through the current path, but I have not forgotten. That will be done. A degree marketing compliance at Rex Center, I know that you appointed it out a while back. Um, that's another project that's gonna cost. It's, we're currently working on it, uh. Last I talked to Ron, he's getting a a person to go out and give him an estimate, so once I get that, I will present that to council. I just follow it up with you on that. The eleventh street sewer project, we had a meeting with KDHE last week between. The city's engineers and that KDHE, that is an ongoing back and forth. And the current design issues are the raw water line and the, uh. Service line, the main that goes through, they're being too close together, they don't like the sewer going in between. So, um, we're trying to work around it, we're talking about encasements, so that I will be talking to. Uh, the two engineers from Kirk and Michael tomorrow to. Uh, discuss which way we're gonna go, so I can close out that project and get that, we've been waiting for a long time. Um, like I said, my biggest challenge is getting KDHE to sign off on it, and I'm not an engineer, so I'm trying to work through them to get it done. Without completely digging up our water lines and replacing them, that's kind of what we're trying to do. Anyway, Article G, Jessica, thank you for your help on that, uh, I've also got a lot of help from the staff. I did get Jessica's stuff today and I will update it if there's a team next week. But I just wanted you to know I didn't drop the ball on that, and I'm still working on it, so, uh, it's a lot, and there's, thank you. And budget twenty twenty five, favorite subject, I've been working with Angela. Um, our projected revenue at this point, this is all draft and projected, but it's three million fifty. Three million fifty eight thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and eleven cents. And, um, with current expenditure requests, we're at three. Million nine hundred sixty seven thousand ninety eight dollars and ninety five cents, that means. My goal is to get all of those expenditures cut to a point where it's lower than projected revenue. So, um, that's gonna be a lot of. Cutting, and a lot of, uh. Going through each line item with a fine tooth comb to make sure that I'm asking exactly what I need to. Um, and that what the challenge is gonna be for me is. I'm still, I'm also trying to honor some of their requests, like Dawn, you've talked about reinstituting. You know, transfers toward each department contributes a transfer into a capital proven fund and equipment fund. And with the current projected regulations, we're gonna work together. Uh, to get that done, so what I am asking of council, I know that my budget calendar's not as successful as I hoped. But, um, what I need your help with is I am requesting your time. Uh, for a couple of sessions next month, since we've got a budget in our our hearings. September, I would like to do at least one or two budget sessions between the department heads tonight and city council, and I was wondering. There's two options, one, we can do it, or we do it a half an hour prior to the meeting, which. This is usually not productive, because we're just rushing through the half hour, department heads don't feel like they get to talk to you, and, um. And, um, I know you don't get as much opportunity to talk to us, so I'm requesting two special meetings to discuss budget next month. I'm asking what days would that be?
When is our budget hearing, is that the ninth of September?
First, the the first meeting is September, so the second, Monday.
Okay, so it has to be to the paper then? To be published in the twenty, August twenty ninth edition, right, because don't we have to publish our budget? And budget hearing and things like that, something?
Yes.
Okay. So you, we have just a few.
Two meetings in August.
Yeah, so we have between. The week of the fifth, the week of the twelfth, the week of the nineteenth.
Our meetings are the second and fourth, so maybe we ought to go the first and the third with our special meetings.
Okay, if that's what you wanna do.
I don't know, if anybody else. Maybe still do it at five thirty like we do our city council.
And we we did about the honor.
Yeah.
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 Maybe we do, could I propose the fifth, and then if we need another one, then we have the nineteenth to do another one?
Hey.
Because the fifth would be the first Monday?
Yeah.
Would that work for you, Dustin?
Sure, I'm I'm working there.
I mean, I just think it works with the department heads in town or here, sorry, I don't necessarily care, but.
Go ahead, speak for me.
You'll do what I say. Will bear me too.
I can provide.
No, I've been in some sick clubs where like, it's like pay a fine if your phone goes off.
At work?
Like some like rotary or Kuanos or something. Yeah, maybe we should have.
Quarter show.
Then you should swap.
Uh, that was turning petitions and allegations, I mean, we could just start laying everybody a half an hour. Anything else for us, Dustin?
No, so just to clarify my understanding, so is everyone alright with the fifth of August twenty twenty four, five thirty P M? Thank you, council.
We get a reminder email.
Are we providing dinner or just like?
We don't have a second slice.
Yeah, like, I think, Santa, but I'm just like, no, you can't keep us there all night, are you?
Thank you, council, that's all I have.
Okay, city council, Darcy, anything? Dawn, you've got your booth?
Yeah, I got my little ass.
Let's do it.
Okay, have we ever come up with a contact info? On the housing situation out in the good Sam, the list of homes there, how people can give it to those people? A lot of people told me they tried and tried and tried to call them, wanted to know if they have apartments available, any row.
Uh, yes.
And they had no response, we need to get something that we could publish that they could contact that number.
I do have it, uh, if you want, you'll send it to you.
Yes, please. I'll even share it on Facebook, because a lot of people have asked me, and I don't, I tried getting ahold of them, but this was two months ago. And I never got a call back, so good, I'm glad you got that taken care of. Uh, it did rain tonight, but I was thinking, with the spring's not running. Would this be a good time, then maybe we can go up to Creasy Park with the bush hog and run it down through there. See if we get that cleaned up a little bit.
All, if if you don't mind, I'd like to talk to Troy.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah. And, uh, any word, Mr. Wykel, on the truck route, did you happen to pursue that at all, or are we?
As far as the truck.
Okay.
We looked into it, the issue is being, because that's a highway of fourteen. Uh, and because the state pays for a lot of maintenance of that, because it's a state highway, we don't think we can regulate the truck traffic.
So we can enforce the truck route on it then?
We can't, so the, yeah, that's my opinion.
Okay.
We did look into, we looked at the organs for, uh.
We have a proposal for jaybreaks and the trailers that.
So the sides basically are recommend, recommended, they're not.
We would like the trucks to go around them, but we can't force them.
We can't force them through.
We, yeah, I was aware, we do have coming to you soon, uh. Updated organs on trailers that that you want to force them to, but you also have one on jaybreaks, which was the last time that would make, uh. Against city courts and they use a jaybreak, so we have it, we're on this.
Very good.
And I did want to comment, they've had that, they had, they got that to me last week, I'll have it on the next council meeting.
Okay, so, good. And then, um, this is way out there, it's almost silly. But it's been brought to my attention now for those last three months in a row. Down here across from the fire station, we have the railroad with boxcars there. Their refrigerated boxcars have been sitting there for three months, four months. They do have freezer compartments or refrigeration compartments on them running, and I'm wondering. What are in those things that they have to keep refrigerated, and is it safer to be in the city limits of Ellsworth? Yeah, that's a lot of refrigeration used, they have fuel tanks. And I got it on my truck and walked over there, and they actually did have some, either diesel or propane compressor running. Keeping those cold, but why would they be there for three months?
And I know some of the neighbors have complained, like, when they were here, when they were here before, not as many. And there was a neighbor that called and called and called, yes. And they finally got them, they were gone for a while and then out they're back, so I don't know what. I don't know why they parked them there, but.
You know, hopefully, that's just what we don't want in there, you know? It's just strange that they would sit there that long, running, keeping the refrigerator. So I don't know, far, can the police, can you go on railroad property and check something, I haven't out?
As far as opening them up, no, we're not gonna break in.
No, no, not break in, no, no, you can inquire about without fridging anything on the railroad, right?
We've asked and we've called about it before because we're getting the same complaints, because apparently a lady lives four blocks from there, so it's really loud and she can't sleep. But we haven't had anything up with any specific.
Yeah, hold up, okay, so other people have heard them running too there, yeah. It just seems strange, she was sitting there that long, running.
The railroad.
Someone's like looking for their frozen product. Anyway, that's just, a number of people have asked me, so I went and checked it out, and that's all I have, so, so there, Jessica.
What you go, Dawn? Hey, Erin, how about you?
Um, I was just gonna say, if Dustin wanted to maybe put out a number out there, uh, which we've already discussed, but what number the sales tax. Actually represents that goes towards our budget? I didn't know if you wanted to put something out publicly, so that way the public actually has an idea of what our sales tax represents.
Oh, the quarter percent?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a good idea.
I'll get with Angela to get you an exact number.
Okay.
I estimate around, I don't know, seventy eight, I think, but I'll get you an exact.
Yeah, I think the public would be interested in that.
Sure.
Yeah. Good, I get it.
Okay, Tyler?
Uh, I had a citizen was asking me about the. Street signs like kids playing slow, kids playing on twelfth street, like. Where I live, up to like Dead St. Clair's house, she was wondering about. What it would take to get signs, or if you can, or. Because there are a lot of kids on twelfth, and there's, you know, there's quite a lot of traffic.
There's a lot of kids on Prospect.
Yeah, there's a lot of kids on Prospect too, but she was, she was wondering about those signs, and I said I'd bring it up.
Kids at play.
Yeah, I think it's like a kid something, I think there's one there.
They're home by the soccer for the lot that says.
Yeah.
Kids caught or.
Slow or watch out or something, she was wondering about if we could get some signs up there on twelfth, like from. Prospect to at least her house on twelve, West twelve.
So I was on the street side, I think you guys would make that decision, I guess that's still what it is.
Is that how, okay, yeah, I forgot.
Well, yeah, that can happen either at the street level or at your level, however you want to do it. So from Prospect to what, across the street?
Uh, where's, what's she on, it's where the B F W is, what street is that, Broadway? Like twelfth and Broadway. From like there to.
Wells and Broadway to Prospect.
Yeah. I don't know where you'd stick one there, like, like Prospect. That's all I got.
Okay, well, then that makes me think like Darcy had brought up a while ago, like six months at least about like getting signs on Douglas that said like two hour parking.
I don't know.
Are they like just a couple or? I, well, I currently park there, I suppose.
Um, a counterpoint is the newspapers, that's just.
Gotcha, because that's where you guys park, like the staff.
Well.
Was that where?
Could we get a sign that just says Alan parking, Alan's parking?
Well, we made it.
Yeah, that's your fault.
You gotta paint it red, believe it.
Okay, well, I, I have a couple things, um, and then I have some commercials. So I taught a class in Russell that ended at the beginning of the month and one of my participants is from Wilson and she gave Nathan Rodriguez a shout out. And I kept reading to bring it up, just saying that he's doing a really fabulous job keeping our rec center nice and clean and tidy. And so this week is for each fair week out there. And last year he did an amazing job keeping it nice and clean. So I just want to give him a shout out, certainly reported. Um, also shout out to Wygle and his staff because I know they've been working their tails off. Being short staffed and stuff like that. So kudos to you for keeping it together and keep swimming, keep, she not to worry about. Okay, and then some commercials. So it's for each fair week. Join us for community barbecue out at the rec center at five o'clock on Thursday. In the past, we've had hamburgers. This year, Michael Homeyer is smoking a hog, so we're gonna have full court. So come out, you can stay for the fair, you can walk through and see all the exhibits. Um, you can even enter your stuff in open class tonight from seven to nine or tomorrow for eight to nine thirty. Intend. Um, and then we've got the silent auction on Thursday evening, so come out for that. And because Mary, sorry, I'm gonna give you, well, shout out Mary, since you said you have some balance issues. My next day strong, stay healthy class starts on August sixth. It helps with balance and strength training for people over fifty five. And it's a week that we meet twice a week, so. You what? But I didn't say your age. You could. Right, but I have reached out to somebody under fifty five, it's people with.
Where's it at?
It's at J H Robbins Memorial Library, which is part of the city. So they, um, are allowing me to use the space for free. And a few years ago, they had extra money in their budget, so they bought all of the weights for me to use. So the city essentially is paying for people to take, to use the equipment, so I don't have to haul it all the time. So anyway, that's, that's it.
That's wonderful. Everything, um, but I'm actually gonna have surgery to get care of that one.
What? Okay, keep it in mind for another time then. Okay. All right, Dan.
Way to go, Jessica. I'm gonna get you signed up for a sales presentation. That was great. I think that, um, I think Mary will eventually go. Um, I'll get you back a little bit there, Mary. Um, yeah, Cowtown in two weeks, so you know, when I took over as mayor, uh, became very clear, there were a lot of problems with Cowtown and, um, you know, I I didn't want to be a mayor of a town that's festival failed, so I've really gotten involved with it. And tried my best. And we've got some great people, some super leaders, they've got a vision for where they want it to go. Um, and and it really can't be what it once was. I I think that model kind of ran its course, it didn't work. Um, so we're gonna kind of take it from here. Try to build something. So the more support you could give it, the more positive feedback you can give it. Um, inviting people, you know, donating your own time, uh, will really help them. And I'm really proud of them for coming to the realization that, hey, these things cost money. Um, originally, they wanted to kind of go it alone and see if they can take the money that they made. They kind of build it into something, uh, you know, and they they've realized that, hey, we're gonna need a little bit of help from the city. Uh, but I think that their vision is is spot on. And I I hope this year goes really well, but just keep that in mind, it's two weeks. Um, anything you can do to help as far as a volunteer, you can invite somebody to help would be greatly appreciated. And just, just come there with your smiling faces and ready to have fun. Um, the other thing is a thank you to Dustin and Jessica for kind of spearheading our uh, police chief, uh, job search and and all that they did there. Really happy to have Chief Penny here now. And just wanted to thank them for all that they did. And, um, look forward to working with him, uh, moving into the future. Uh, another thank you to Dustin for kind of putting together the pieces for the annual meeting for the League of Municipalities in early O- October. He organized all that, got the hotel rooms ready. And, um, I went two years ago. Didn't feel like it was something I needed to do every year, but I look forward to going back in October and spend a little time with Dustin there. So besides that, um, I I didn't have anything else, so that'll be it.
Thank you, Dan. Wait, any need for an executive session tonight?
I have one thing that just
Please, no.
Speaking of the honorary, Dawn brought this up a long time ago. Did they ever get a big American flag out there? I don't know if they got the flag all painted yet or not.
Yes, it's a. I told him we had to get it by the Fourth of July and it was up.
Oh, good.
Thanks for standing on.
I do want to thank fire department for helping Ron get that done because fire department left a truck.
You look nice out there.
Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Officer President, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Darcy, seconded by Tyler to adjourn our meeting at six forty six P M. Uh, any discussion? I dragged it out? Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passed, meeting adjourned.
Okay, council.
Thank you.